Brian. Good evening. We're going to call this meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation. Apparatus operator Evan Van Arsdale has agreed to come give the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand with me.
Lord, we just come to you and thank you for your many blessings that you've given this city. We pray for your guidance and your wisdom, your knowledge, Lord, in this meeting. We pray that you touch each and every leader in this city right now, Lord, making decisions. Pray that you just fill this room, guide us and direct us, Lord. Again, we thank you for all your many blessings you've given us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, very much. Ms. Salter, roll call, please.
Okay. And the mayor has a proclamation to you after the roll call. Mr. Waltney?
Here.
Mr. Thames?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wilberton?
Here.
Mr. McCleskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andrews?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
And President Limbaugh?
Here. So we have a quorum?
Everybody's here.
All right. Good. Yes, everyone's here. Hello, Mr. Wyatt. Didn't expect you here.
It's a good story.
Okay. I look forward to that. Mayor, did you? I'm sorry, not yet. Okay.
I don't think they're here yet.
No problem. Okay. We will. We have a proclamation that the mayor's going to be involved in at some point, so we won't interrupt the agenda at that point. The next item is the reading of the minutes from the May 20th, 2019 meeting. Chair, would welcome a motion for dispensing of that reading and approving said meetings in a second.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wright, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous. Ward vacancies, I have not had a chance to discuss these with y'all. Do we have a Ward III Historic Preservation Commission? That one's still. We've reopened that one, am I correct, Mr. Johnson? Okay, good.
As far as I know, Ms. Salter, we don't have any. We haven't had any applications for that position.
We actually closed on May 20th, so we would need to reopen that.
Okay, and no, no applications, okay. And I actually did speak to somebody who I thought was going to send their application, so I'll get back in touch with him. So I guess let's go ahead and reopen that, that spot.
Until July 8th?
July 8th, okay. Yeah.
And certainly, we want to put the information out to any and everyone that we possibly can, that that's something we're interested in having applicants for. Ward II Arts Advisory Council, let's see. Folks?
Well, they just resigned today, so we need to open it up until July 8th.
Also July 8th. Good. We still have the three at-large vacancies for Hydra and the one Ward II vacancy for Hydra as well, so we actually have four vacancies on that particular ward, I mean, that particular committee, board.
Bruce, I think, have we set those interviews for the Ward Four Library position, the Ward Four Library spot?
Ward Four does not close until June the 24th.
Okay, okay.
So we'll have to wait until after the end. We did have to do that.
Yes, I knew that. Okay, great.
Good. Thank you. Any other boards or?
Did you reopen Hydra till what time?
Committees, yes.
Yeah. Okay, that's what I was about to say, was we needed to reopen it until July, the Hydra positions.
Yes, we do.
Because I think they're all closed.
Yes, we do. We will continue to do that.
Yeah, they close on May 20th, so y'all reopen them.
Good. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, it's a good time.
Brian, do you want to ask your family to come up?
We have Brian and his family here tonight. So this is Grayson. You must be Carson.
Oh, how did you?
I have ESPN.
ESPN.
Your dad told me. He spoke very highly of you. And his mom, Janet, and, I'm sorry, I didn't get to meet you.
Latoya.
Latoya before the meeting, so I just want to say, I've worked with Brian for a long time and appreciate his heart, appreciate him even more now that I kind of know his story. Everybody's got a story, but Brian and Latoya's is special. So we were talking one day and he was act, your dad was actually telling me some things about you in relationship to your little brother. So as I understand it, when he was about to be born, they asked you what was the one thing that you wanted. Brian, do you want to kind of tell that story? You tell it so much better than I do.
Yes, sir, I will. About August the 27th, 2017, it's Carson's birthday, and we asked him what he wanted for his birthday, and he said, "I just want my little brother." Well, lo and behold, two days later, August the 29th, here comes Grayson. So I believe he got his wish.
He did. He did. So, and because of that, and because you're such a great big brother, we have a special certificate for you that says, "The world's best big brother, Carson." All right? So that's for you to hang on your wall, okay? And then we have a proclamation that says, "Whereas Grayson Alexander Byers was born to Brian Byers and Latoya White on August 29th, weighing one pound, 12 ounces." And whereas Grayson Alexander Byers was also welcomed to the family by brother Carson Cunningham, and whereas Grayson Alexander Byers was placed on a ventilator at birth and pulled out his tubes at five days of age, and whereas Grayson Alexander Byers has undergone nine brain surgeries, several eye procedures, and is currently thriving at the Bell Center for early intervention, and whereas Grayson Alexander Byers loves music, spending time with his family, and has recently started to use the standard in occupational therapy, whereas Grayson Alexander Byers is thriving and is proof of God's grace and power, now therefore I, Scott McBrayer, Mayor of the City of Homewood, hereby declare that June 10th, 2019, be forever known, remembered, and proclaimed as Grayson Alexander Byers' Day in the City of Homewood, Alabama. All right? Good job. Yeah. If you're going to be the big brother, people have to know it. That's right. You want to address the council and say something?
Counsel of the great city of Homewood, whose spirits so vibrant through the state of Alabama, to the Honorable Mayor Scott McBrayer and the wonderful, again, community of Homewood, thank you all so much for blessing my family with this wonderful gift, one that will allow Grayson to champion from this point on to the reins of his progression as growing into his new millennium and stage. Grayson is now 19 pounds. We were told that Grayson would never see or hear. Grayson has 20/20, and Grayson also can hear as well. So we thank you, City of Homewood, Mayor McBrayer, for championing behind him, to showing him that his fight was nothing less but a testimony to be amplified for all babies and all those that are born with his condition and also challenges. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Bye. It's good to see you. Hi. Thank you, hanging in a good place.
Byers family, Godspeed. All right, next item, we have some amendments to the agenda as always, two for committee referral and two for new business other, and I would ask y'all not to try to follow the numbers in sequence because they are not, and I will take responsibility for that. 1906-19, request, this is a committee referral agenda item to special issues, Ms. Smith, of course. Request to send nomination to, 1906-19, request to send nomination to Jefferson County Personnel Board for Appointment to County Board of Equalization, requested by Melody Salter and myself, and again, to special issues. The other committee referral is 2106-19, and this is to, also to special issues. This is a request for permission to perform grading on the edge of the Fox property, requested by Brian Hatcher, Greg Cobb, and BEZ. Now, two new business others, one is 1806-19, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with One Roof, requested by Mike Higginbotham and our Finance Committee. Is that correct, Mr. Higginbotham?
Correct.
And then 2006-19, request for consideration of a moratorium on new construction permits in the West Homewood District for 120 days, requested by Mike Higginbotham and Andrew Wilberton, and again, that is new business other. So this is four items. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for the amended agenda.
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Andrews, second from Mr. Higginbotham. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that is passed. Next is the consent agenda. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval of an elongated consent agenda.
So moved.
All right. Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mr. McCleskey. Any further discussion on this particular item? If there is none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved. All right, we'll move into old business agenda. 0602-19, public hearing set for June 24th at 6:00 PM for consideration of an ordinance limiting timeframe of hotel stays within the city limits of Homewood, requested by Mr. McCleskey, and this will be set and carried over for June 24th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. All right, let's see. 0704-19, bid opening was set for June 3rd, 2019, at 4:45 PM for spring tree planting, excuse me, requested by Amy Malam and our Homewood Environmental Commission, and Melody Salter. The bid we got was not bonded, as I understood it, and therefore we reset that bid to be opened July 15th at 6:00 PM. Okay? Was 6:00 PM the time we set, Ms. Salter?
No, sir. It was four, the deadline is 4:30 and the bid opening is at 4:45.
Okay, so 4:30, dead, um.
Deadline on the 15th.
Deadline, 4:45 bid opening. Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
President.
All right. Thank you. All right. 0804-19, request for presentation of audit results for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2018, by BMSS, requested by Robert Burgett, our Finance Director, and Melody Salter, our Assistant Finance Director, report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met and voted on June the 3rd after the presentation by BMSS to five to zero to recommend accepting the audit.
All right, so that's the motion from Finance. All in favor of the acceptance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous. Thank you. 2004-19, public hearing set for tonight, for June 10th, 2019, at 6:00 PM for consideration of possible vacation of ALI on 18th Street, requested by myself, report from Public Works. Mr. Wright?
Yes, Mr. President. The committee met and voted four to zero to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight.
All right, thank you. We will open this public hearing, and do we have anyone to speak to this particular And by the way, as someone's making their way forward, anyone who wants to speak to any matter on any public hearing, be sure and sign in here to the, my right, your left, with Ms. Salter, and then.
Could you?
Are you signed in? No. And then identify what you write, your name and residence, please. Now, you are?
My name is Darren Hamrick. I am a civil engineer with Saint Associates.
Sure.
And I'm just here to speak on behalf of the project. My address at Saint Associates is 2 Perimeter Park South, Suite 500E, Birmingham, Alabama.
Good.
And I'm here just in support of the project. If there was any questions related to that, I'm just here to answer them, and that's all.
Good. Counsel, any questions?
Refresh my memory, this is in regards to the hotel project?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any drawings or anything? I can't remember.
You're attached to the resolution.
Okay. I just, I just needed to remind myself. Okay. Thank you, Mike.
All right. Any other questions? There being none, thank you very much. Anyone else who want to speak to this matter? There being none, we will close this public hearing. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval of this vacation.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mr. Waltney. All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. This is 110, and this is Resolution 1978. Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir.
All right. We will move on to 1005-19, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a variance to the fence ordinance at 3 Ventura Drive, requested by Chris Tucker and Greg Cobb with our BEZ Department. Reports from special issues, Ms. Smith.
The committee met last Monday and voted four to zero to refer this item out to council tonight pending, without recommendation pending the public hearing. Mr. Tucker did a presentation of the variances. He's actually asking for two variances, am I right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Motion was made by Ms. Andrews and second by Mr. Higginbotham.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We will open the public hearing. Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir. This is a corner lot. Corner lots have two fronts, and so on the fence, on the roadside, our ordinance calls for a 15-foot setback from the property line. And so at the top of your page is Independence Drive. The heavy line is actually below it, that's got those cross marks on it, is actually the property line, and Mr. Tucker's requesting to follow the property line. As you see, if it's all set 15 feet, it would go through the house, but it would, the two variances are, one is the 15-foot offset, and the second one is, there's a portion that extends in front of the house. And I need, I'm going to start bringing me a pointer up here. If you can tell the difference between the house and where the driveway is, the corner right there in the house, and then he's got a parking pad out front.
Time out. Mr. Cobb, we have you a pointer.
We do? Hey.
We're versatile.
I should, I should be better prepared than that.
You can thank Mr. Higginbotham later.
He caught me up last week, too. Okay. Right. Where we go, steady hands, Greg.
Down.
It's not showing on the screen, is it? I see it on the wall.
What is it showing?
Sure won't. Anyway, where the fence hits the left edge of the screen, that's about the corner of the house, that little green line. That piece forward would be in front of the house, so that's also what our ordinance is, that no fences in the front yard. So he's asking, requesting to bring that out past the front of the house. It's eight foot tall, it'd kind of be a safety issue for children getting out of the car there, as well as a noise barrier, because you can see proximity to, he's 24 feet from Highway 31. So it's Mr. Tucker's, there he is.
Well, first, before we get to Mr. Tucker, is there any counsel questions of Mr. Cobb?
You, oh, me?
Yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, okay. So there's no issue with, with the Aldott right-of-way?
No, sir. He's off the right-of-way, onto his private property.
Because it said, I saw on there, right-of-way varies or something, so I didn't know what that meant.
Well, the heavy line that's running horizontal is the property line, and you see his fence is just inside his property line. There you go, that's a good shot.
But go down a little bit, bit up, or up, rather. I thought it said something like.
24 foot, four inches.
Okay, okay.
Can you see it better?
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, I just saw it right-of-way varies.
Right. That's printed on the tax map because it's going up and down 31, and it changes all over the place, up and down through there. His is pretty consistent at 24 foot. With us, four inches, there's five inches, there's seven inches, so it does vary just along this property line.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
Bruce, can I?
So, yes, please, go. Ms. Smith?
In the committee meeting, we had a lot of discussion about this because, as we all know, we're pretty hesitant and reluctant to grant variances for what constitutes a front yard fence. We've had issues with it in the past. I think it kind of opens up a lot, and we typically do consider hardships for safety purposes, and I do understand that, although in this particular case, I feel like the hardship was created by the person themselves. I mean, the hardship was created because you built a house on a lot that's right next to 31. I'm hesitant to do that, just because I think it sets a precedent and opens doors that we might not want to open.
All right. Any other comments while Mr. Cobb is up here?
Yeah.
Mr. Tucker, please sign in, and anyone else who would like to speak to this? Yes.
And to reiterate what Ms. Smith said is that, I believe we had discussed being able to allow the fence to go up to the front building line, and it would, it would not need any type of action.
It would need a side setback variance.
It would need the variance.
Still need the variance on the 15.
Yes, sir, that's why there's two. One of them is the, if you let it go up to the, to the property, the front building line, that's your side setback variance, and the other would be the same width in front of the house.
Okay. I just wanted to make that point, that we had.
No problem.
Okay.
Anyone else who wants to ask Mr. Cobb anything?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So I guess there was some discussion about basically there being a tree line currently where the fence would end, is that true?
There's some trees in there, yes, sir.
And I thought we had asked for some pictures. I may be wrong on that, just to kind of clarify some of that, so.
I don't remember that.
You got another copy of that, Chris? You got another copy of that?
That's the only one. You could take that back to Brian, that would be great, so.
Yes, let him, let him put that up on the screen. Mr. Tucker, if you want to come forward and, we've certainly heard a couple of opinions on this. Any other questions for Mr. Tucker? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I know it's not a precedent, I want to say that, I totally agree with that. However, there's only three houses on 31 period, there's only three residential houses, so, you know, it's kind of a different, you know, little animal, so.
Well, I will agree with Ms. Smith. You chose to build on that animal.
I did. The state of Alabama took half that lot back in the 60s. It was a lot bigger.
History.
And there was another one in the northbound lane, there's another house there.
History.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Tucker?
Another point, if I can make another point.
Sure.
It is very far off the road where it stops, so it's, it's 73 and a half feet off the property line in the front, and more about 85 feet off of Ventura, if you drew a straight line down the Ventura right-of-way, so it's very far. It actually doesn't even come as far up as the neighbor's fence. You see on there where there's ends at their chimney, so you won't be able to see it from Ventura because there'll be trees blocking, there'll be trees lined up in front of that fence, so that's that. So the fence would stop here, so if you're looking for Ventura, you won't see the fence from the front, because there's a bunch of trees, there're about 50 feet of trees stacked up in front of it.
But directly behind that Beige car, you will see the fence, I mean.
You will. Back in here, it's going to be behind that, those bushes, so it won't be as noticeable back here, and then that little ditch you throw back up there. If Aldott's okay, we might try to even put something in there. We're definitely going to put it on our side.
Go.
Put some landscaping in front of our side where you pull up on the parking pad and there's trees up there. So I was just going to make a suggestion about how to possibly help resolve some of this, but seeing as how tree ordinance and landscape ordinance have kind of been a hot topic lately, I know hedges are considered a front yard fence, but I would proffer that if we replanted some mature trees along the line there, that might help significantly with, with some of that as well, but just a thought. Is Aldott okay with that? Well, I think it's not in the Aldott right-of-way, correct? My fence won't be, but if you plant stuff in front of the fence, it would be.
So is that close?
Instead, and I'm suggesting possibly instead of the fence in the front yard itself. Not a hedge, no, I'm suggesting. Arbor bodies, you know, the tall, you know, stuff like that, you don't plant them right together because they have to grow, and then you have a little gap for, you know, kids or, you know.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Andrews.
Chris, have you talked to Becca? I know she was here at the committee meeting, and I know her husband's coming tonight. I heard from her today.
I sh, I can't speak for her, but when I showed her this, she was, she seemed to be okay and even glad, because when cars turn, what street is that that turns into Ventura? You're making a right at TCBY, the lights, cars flash across, there's a lot of sound. It would cut down on noise to their house and my house, and then the commercial, there's a really bright light, catty corner, that's pointed right on my house and their house. We can't figure out whose it is, but it's super bright, and it's pointed right on our house. It would cut down on noise and light and be safer for whoever buys it, so.
All right. Thank you very much, appreciate it, Mr. Tucker. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this matter? If so, please sign in with your name and address. Yes, sir.
My name's Stan Huner. I live at 5 Ventura Avenue.
Okay.
And my wife is Rebecca Martin, as Ms. Andrews said. We had planned, well, obviously, when my wife got home from the last meeting, we had a discussion, just like most husbands and wives do. I had not seen the drawing. We did talk about it. We weren't necessarily opposed to, well, we weren't going to object to the fence extending. We talked about it a little bit more. We're more of the mindset that, just like everyone else on our street uses a hedge road. We're more of the mindset that, just like everyone else on our street uses a hedgerow, trees, whatever, to separate the front yards. We did the same. We used an evergreen, and it's worked quite well. And again, I understand there's safety concern, but I'm pretty sure that he knew what those concerns were going to be when he built the house. And I still think we can accomplish, with some kind of landscape screen, something that helps us and helps him, noise, light, et cetera.
Great. Any other questions? Word five, folks. Mr. Jones.
So let me make sure I'm clear with what you're recommending. So you're okay with the fence going up to the front building line, but you're for planning something to... As a buffer where the fence is indicated?
Yes, sir. And I understand what he mentioned, there will be gaps, you know, if you were to plant. You can tier landscaping however you need to, to fill in those gaps until that happens. He could step back a couple of feet and put a lower shrub to fill those in. He could do a lot of different things. But you're correct. I don't have a problem, neither does my wife, coming to the front of the house. That's exactly what we did. But then, we did a continuation of that barrier, excuse me, with landscaping and not a fence, because if we put a fence up to the street or further up, it would adversely affect other folks. And I will say one other thing. As far as where his fence would end, if you granted it, there are some small scrub trees, and there are some trees on the front of his lot. I don't know how much you could or could not see it. I don't know what his landscape plan is. So I'm not really sure how you could make that statement, unless you saw something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I have a question. So...
Mr. Wright.
Do you want to see a landscape plan beforehand?
Oh, I think that would be your decision on whether or not you let a fence happen, one way or the other. And I think you have to have all that information to make that decision. I can't provide that.
No, I understand you can't. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak to this matter? If not, we will close the public hearing. Comments from the council? We've heard from several of you. Anyone else? I see a couple of y'all are thinking about it. Mr. Wright, go ahead.
Well, it sounds like a potential solution is to go up to the front of the house with landscaping barrier of some type. But the problem is, is we don't really have any type, and we don't... And that's a piece of uncertainty. So...
So are you making a motion?
Well, I'm not making a motion yet. I'm really just... I'm really opening it up for discussion, like you are, Mr. President. But that seems to be a potential solution.
Ms. Andrews?
That's my suggestion, or my question, I should say, as I was asking Mr. Wyatt, is could we carry over pending approval of a landscaping plan? Could we approve the first variance, which is the setback? Right. And then... Do everything at once. Okay.
We'll send it back to special issues. Yes. Smile, Ms. Smith. With the expectation of a landscaping plan, Mr. Tucker, and we'll go from there, okay?
Okay, so refer back to...
Refer back to special issues. Thank you very much. All right. 11:0519, public hearing set for tonight. For consideration of a variance to the driveway ordinance at 416 Devon Drive, requested by David Champion, Greg Cobb, our BEZ department. Begin with a report from special issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes. Committee met last week and voted four to zero to refer this item out to full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. And the motion was made by Mr. McCloskey and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham.
All right. Thank you. And we will open the public hearing. Mr. Cobb?
Yes. This is a request for a secondary driveway. And the terrain is quite steep. That blue line, there it is. If you... The blue line out there was... Is edge of the street behind, to the right of that red bush. You see how steep the driveway is? It disappears. You can't see the bottom of the garage door. And there's a set of stairs that come up to the right, right there, off the driveway. I think there's maybe four or five steps. I didn't count them, but probably five. And then, to get into the house, the sidewalk curves around. They have a ramp, wheelchair ramp, to get onto the porch, and then from the porch into the house. This secondary driveway would allow them to drive straight up to the sidewalk in the front. The picture on the right is Rumsen. I'm sorry. I messed you up there, Brian. Anyway, you would drive right upside that bush, right up to the sidewalk in front of the house, and then be able to get into the house without having to go through the stairs. And Ms. Champion is here, if you'd like to speak.
I'm sorry, ma'am. For point of order, I would need you to sign in and then come to the microphone. We do have a few citizens that actually...
Just sign your name.
Listen to this.
The issue is that he's in a wheelchair, and there's no way to get into the house without the stairs, currently. Because your driveway's, like I say, about five steps below the sidewalk. And so the request is to go to the right of that red-colored bush. And I keep thinking what that is right now. Japanese maple?
Japanese maple.
That's what it is. Japanese maple. Okay. To drive straight up to the sidewalk, and then be able to get into the house in a wheelchair, cross the sidewalk, up on the porch, and into the door. Is that correct? Come on over here with me.
Okay. I'm sorry, ma'am. We need you at the microphone. Yes, ma'am. And you are...
I'm sorry. I don't talk loud, but listen.
No problem.
The problem is, he's in a wheelchair. He's had two surgeries last year, so the only way we can get him out is to go down those stairs. And so we're, you know, at the point of it's just, we don't go anywhere with him but to doctor appointments. We checked in to getting the chair lift coming up from the garage, you know, straight on up into the house, but Mobility Central said the stairs weren't wide enough to handle that chair. That way, I would have been able to get him down from the kitchen to the basement, into the car and the garage. So, you know, we just consider whatever y'all could approve for us.
We understand. Council, any questions of Ms. Champion?
I just have a quick question, and it's more for Mr. Cobb.
Microphone.
So the black lines indicate where that driveway would be and meet the sidewalk? And I assume then there would be a ramp?
No, but that's a split image picture, of course.
Oh, that gets you to the top.
That would be the driveway, and they'd be able to pull the car right up to the sidewalk.
Gotcha. Okay.
And then get out.
And that gets you to the front door. Then you don't have to do the steps.
Right. And there's still two ramps. There's a ramp from the sidewalk to the porch.
Okay.
And another ramp from the porch to into the house.
Into the house. Okay. Good. That's what we need to know. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Either for or against? Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it. Please have a seat.
Thank you.
No problem. If there's no one else who won't speak to this, we will close this public hearing and welcome a motion and a second.
Just ask a quick question.
Sure.
Greg? Do you feel like this is the best solution to help them out?
The way that lot splits, that's about the best you can do with it. It's going to have a... It's going to have a lot of concrete and not much yard left, but it's just... There's a good picture of the lot split right there. You can see the elevation change. Probably the best way you could do it, unless you took out all the shrubs and went at that angle. But...
You're still going to be getting out of a big, long slope?
Well, the lot... It is a slope, but it's not that bad. Well, you could pull a car in there and make it... You're going to have to turn a little bit right there and make the passenger door by the sidewalk. And they'll probably have to do a little bit of extension of that sidewalk to marry it up nice, because the two angles won't work out unless you do a little bit more work. But as she said, the chair lift wouldn't work from below, and then you've got those stairs, and I know how hard those are to negotiate.
All right. Any other questions of Mr. Cobb? There being none, is...
Mr. Lombard, I do have one question. Could we consider, when they sell the house, that they have to break up the driveway?
Certainly, I've thought about that. Yeah. All right. Well, that could be part of the motion, Ms. Andrews.
I would make that motion to approve with a proffer that when they do sell the house, they break up the driveway, or relance... Or resaw.
All right. Did everyone understand Ms. Andrews's motion?
Condition. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a second?
That's second, Mr. President.
Second from Mr. Wright. So we have a motion from Ms. Andrews, second from Mr. Wright. The motion being approval of this solution until the point at which the house is sold. And then it would be returned to its current configuration. Right? Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. Did I not say that?
That's right. Yes, that's right. That's correct. Yes.
I'm sorry. Forgive me.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that is unanimous. And I did close that public hearing, didn't I? Okay, good. That is Resolution 1979. We'll move on to the next item, which is 12:0519. Public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at 251 Lakeshore Parkway, Suite 101, requested by Diane Foley and Greg Cobb. Ms. Smith?
Yes. Committee met and voted four to zero to refer this item out to full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion by Ms. Andrews, seconded by Mr. McCloskey.
All right. Thank you. Opening the public hearing, Mr. Cobb.
Yes, sir. This is a variance for multiple signs. In the Wildwood district, you're allowed two signs not to exceed 20% of the front of a one-story building. That would be the main sign, right there in the center of the building. In the background, you can see another shot, but we have another shot of it. There's four more. I think it's four more signs that say appliance, electronics, furniture, and mattresses. None of those... All the signs don't exceed the allowed area. It's the number of signs, because you're only allowed two. So he's asking for a total of five. This is similar to the... I didn't make a picture of Walmart, but it's similar to the Walmart that says Walmart, food, pharmacy, and whatever else it says. I know that they're going to never read them.
I understand.
Hobby Lobby, too. Okay. Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Cobb? All right. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. And you are...
My name is Matt McBrath.
Okay.
I'm in representation of the sign company. So primarily, cons is fairly new to the area, and so not everybody knows exactly what they represent. And so by being able to add these additional number of signs, it would allow the residents of Homewood to know exactly what they represent and what they're able to purchase in their store, similar to what Hobby Lobby's doing currently and/or Walmart as well. And also similar to what Sears had on that building prior to the sale.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Go, Ms. Jones.
I couldn't remember. Is it a backlit sign, your main sign?
The ones on the front. The cons is, and everything else is just standalone letters.
Okay.
No lighting whatsoever.
Is it... What color lettering is it for mattresses and is it...
I believe it's a blue... Actually, it's a white finish. Yeah.
And it's not going to be too busy on the side?
Correct. A white on top of the beige is not going to be extremely noticeable, as it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
All right. So anyone else who won't speak to this particular matter? All right. If not, we will close this public hearing. Chair would welcome a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion for Ms. Smith, second for Ms. Andrews. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
All right. Call roll, please.
Mr. Gwaltney?
Yeah.
You say go?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
No.
Mr. Wolverton?
No.
Mr. McCloskey?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And President Lombard?
Yes. So it passes seven to four. And that is Resolution 1980. All right. Thank you. We'll move on to the next item, which is 13:0519. Public hearing set for tonight for consideration of variance to the sign ordinance at 3500 Independent Drive, requested before by Kyle Davis, Greg Cobb, our BEZ department. Report, Ms. Smith?
Yes. Committee met last week, voted four to zero to refer this item out to full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion made by Ms. Andrews and seconded by Mr. McCloskey.
All right. We'll open this public hearing. Mr. Cobb, go.
Yes, sir. This is a secondary sign variance. What's allowed is one attached sign of 50 square feet. There's their attached sign. What's allowed is one attached sign of 50 square feet, theirs, their attached sign, it's at 40 square feet, and the secondary sign is this little sign on the back, which is 3.3 square feet, so a total of 43 square, 43.3 square feet, if sign is just what he's asking for. The way the building sits on the lot, you go around back to go in, so you've got a sign, the big sign faces the road, and this one, you come around back to show you where you are to get into the building, but I just wanted to point out that the two signs combined do not meet the 50 that's allowed in most cases. The building's certainly big enough to support a 50-square-foot sign, but that's what it is. The request actually is for the second little three-foot square sign, 3.3.
So we're talking the number of signs, not the total square foot, correct?
Correct.
Just for clarification.
And that's why I was saying that I want you to know that the two signs added together don't even meet what's allowed.
No, I understand, I understand. All right, questions of Mr. Cobb, Mr. McCloskey?
And so essentially, what you're saying is there's two entrances?
No.
No, there's only one entrance, but...
But the way the building faces the road, you go around back to get in.
To get in, okay.
There's two fascias, actually, because the back is actually a fascia.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
And the parking is in the front, correct?
It's in the back.
It's in the back, too? Okay.
Unless I'm turned around, it's in the front?
Yeah, I can, it's in the back.
You could argue that it's, you could argue it's both.
It's in the back, okay.
Okay.
That's what I thought, you know, sometimes get in the wrong place.
Mr. Wolverton?
So the frontage is facing the road, but parking and access is all around the building?
On the back, on the back, much like we do on 18th Street, you know?
Yeah.
It's very much, on 18th Street, the ordinance says the sign in the rear could be, has to be 30 percent smaller than the one in front, I believe, off the top of my head what the percentage is, but because you park in the back, but the street's in the front, so if you didn't know, weren't real familiar with it, and you hunt a place to park and you see a big parking lot out back, now what store am I at? So we did all of 18th Street that way.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anyone else who wants to speak to this matter? Yes, and you did sign in, your name is?
I did, it even, Kyle Davis, I'm the business owner, so there is actually, when you drive around back, there's actually two entrances, and so this is to denote the main entrance. So, yeah, there is two entrances.
All right, any questions of Mr. Davis? Mr. Wolverton?
Two entrances from the rear, or?
Correct.
Okay.
So the space was actually built out, so it's the second floor of a two-story building, and so we have, we occupy the whole second floor, and it was actually built out originally for two tenants, so there is two separate doors, entrances, and so we wanted to denote the main entrance.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anyone else who wants to speak to this matter? There being none, we will close the public hearing. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for this particular item?
I would need to approve.
Motion for Ms. Smith, second from Mr. McCloskey, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, so we have 10 yays and one abstentions, so this will be Resolution 1981, and it is approved. 1405-19, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of variance to the sign ordinance at 190 West Oxmoor Road, requested by Joe Tunnel, Greg Cobb, first, a report from special issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, actually, this item, we were asked to drop it by the petitioner, which we did, but the public hearing had already been set, so basically, we just need to open and close the public hearing because the item has been dropped.
We can do that quickly.
Yes, we can.
The public hearing is open, the public hearing is closed. Unless there was someone that wanted to speak to it in between, which obviously there was none, so, like how I do that, so there is a motion to drop on the floor?
It's already, it's on the consent agenda, it's already there.
Okay, great, no problem, done. All right, thank you very much. 1805-19, request for mid-year review, requested, put forth by Mr. Burgett, our finance director. We will take a report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the Committee met, and after hearing the report from Mr. Burgett, voted five to zero to recommend accepting the report, there were just one item that we had to handle that was transferring $232,612 from general fund to the cash reserve for economic uncertainty, so that was five to zero recommending that out of finance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones, that will, the recommendation from finance will carry itself as a motion. Chair would therefore like to have a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And that is Resolution 1982, and that is unanimous. All right, 2305-19, request to contract with Regional Planning Commission slash Volker Engineering for the Central Avenue Apple Study, requested by both councilors, Mr. Gualtney and Mr. Thames, report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the Committee met, voted five to zero to recommend this back to the full counsel without recommendation, we need to verify numbers in the budget, and I'm pulling that up now, so...
No problem, if you need a minute, sir.
Let's see, and Mr. Thames has this as well.
Yep.
Was it $12,000?
Right, the net is $12,000, what we would need to do, and I apologize, I was under the impression we budgeted this, my notes said we did, the Homewood Star said we did, but somehow or another, we didn't. So what would need to happen would be, and Mr. Burgett recommended using Capital Projects' carryover fund balance to create a line item for $60,000, and then grants revenue fund a line item for $48,000 coming in, for a net of $12,000 from the city.
And one, Mr. President, the, there was a question about it, if we had taken out, they had done one street, I believe, Reese?
That's a different line.
Oh, that's a different one.
That's a different agenda item.
Oh, that's not in the Apple, okay, that's in the, okay, that's in Central, that's right.
So, Mr. Thames, is that a motion on your part, sir?
Yes, I would motion to fund a line item in capital, Central Avenue Apple Study, with $60,000 from carryover fund balance, and I would also motion to add $48,000 in revenue to the grants fund, and Mr. Burgett can provide us with fund numbers.
All right, good, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gualtney.
Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, sir.
This is a point of clarification, this is a contract with the Birmingham Regional Planning Commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, through the Birmingham Regional Planning Commission, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed to this? There being none, this is unanimous, Resolution 1983, thank you very much. 2805-19, request for consideration of declaring the following vehicle surplus, 1991 Chevy van, the old police evidence van, last six on the serial number is 122-830, requested by Gordon James, our fleet maintenance, report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the Committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval in declaring these vehicles surplus.
All right, good, first reading, Mr. Kendrick.
Yes, sir, this is 2805-19.
Yes.
Okay, it's a night, what we're declaring is the 1991 Chevrolet van. This is an ordinance to declare certain personal property and equipment's surplus, said by established and declared the following described personal property are no longer needed for public or municipal purposes, and the description is a 1991 Chevrolet van, VIN number, and I'll do Mr. Limbaugh, the last four numbers, 2830, and that the mayor be authorized to dispose the property by auction to the highest bidder.
Thank you, sir, Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Thames, second from Mrs. Andrews, roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh.
Yes, so this is ordinance 2747, and the Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Higginbotham, second by Ms. Andrews, roll call.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes.
Mr. Thames?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh.
I'm sorry, did you call my name?
President Limbaugh.
Yes, okay, so ordinance 2747 is passed unanimously, and we will move on. 2905-19, request for consideration of declaring the following seized vehicle surplus, a fleet of Cadillacs, an '86 Fleetwood, ending in 705-401, an '86 Fleetwood, ending in 729-205, a '96 Fleetwood, ending in 706-314, a '93 Cadillac DeVille, ending in 312-324, a '73 Cadillac DeVille, ending in 167-138, a '95 Chevy Caprice, ending in 153-794, and an '06 Volkswagen Jetta, let the imports be represented, ending in 853-933, and report from finance, Mr. Jones. By the way, requested by Chief Ross and Captain Sutton, go.
Yes, sir, I know this excites you so much, all these VIN numbers in one motion.
That many VIN numbers at once?
This is exciting, but we voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item.
Wonderful, first reading, Mr. Kendrick.
Yes, sir, it's an ordinance to declare certain personal property and equipment's surplus, said by established and declared the following described personal property is no longer needed for public or municipal property, purposes, excuse me, Mr. Limbaugh has adequately described it, two 1986 Cadillac Fleetwoods, one 1996 Cadillac Fleetwood, one 1993 Cadillac DeVille, one 1973 Cadillac DeVille, one 1995 Chevy Caprice, and one 2006 Volkswagen Jetta.
Thank you, sir, Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Higginbotham, second for Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh.
Yes, so this will be ordinance 2748, again, the Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Second.
Okay, motion for Mr. Higginbotham, second for Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
No, you can't. Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh.
Yes, so the 2748 is passed 10-0. 3005-19, request for consideration to renew the copier contract with Ameritech, requested by James Yates, our IT department, report, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the Committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of Ameritech, it has a contract on the Jefferson County PACO bid list, and this is also budgeted, so five to zero out of finance.
All right, so we have a motion from finance, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, that is unanimous, and that is 1984, and that is passed. 3105-19, request for consideration to release the property lien of $1,089.36, this was Resolution 1914, for property located at 1801 Kensington Road, Homewood, Alabama, 35209, requested by Melody Salter, our city clerk, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the Committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of the release of the lien.
All right, so we have a motion from finance, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And that is unanimous, and that is 1985, 3205-19, request for consideration to purchase Homewood Access Control System and amend the fiscal year 1819 budget for this purchase, requested by Mr. Yates with our IT department, Mr. Jones again.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the Committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of purchase and budget amendment of $14,998.35 to the miscellaneous equipment line item in the inspection technology fund, so five to zero out of finance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That is Resolution 1986, and that too is unanimous. 3305-19, public hearing set for June 24, 2019, for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at 2800-18th Street South, requested by David Brant and Greg Cobb, we're going to cancel that public hearing due to that item being dropped per the applicant request, so that item is dropped. Had we already dropped that?
It was on consent.
We have not? We did?
It was on consent.
It was on consent.
Okay, good, thank you. 3505-19, request for consideration to amend Resolution 1964 for Volker contract amount for citywide traffic study, requested by Melody Salter and Wyatt Pugh, Mr. Jones, report from finance.
This is the one, Mr. President, the Committee met, voted five to zero to refer this back to full counsel without recommendation pending verification of the amount, so this is the one that had Reese Street that they had already done, is that right, Mr. Cobb?
Mr. Cobb, come forth, or Mr. Thames?
I think that was part of the discussion, and I think Mr. Cobb spoke with Volker and hopefully got on the same page, I think the clerk is here as well, if we have any questions.
He snuck in on me, yes, that's been cleared up with, confusion was what we did to Reese Street, and really what they did to Reese Street was not a traffic study as much as it was an actual design on how to put sidewalks and lighting and everything in, that's different than what we were talking about previously, so the numbers are good as they are.
Right, any questions for Mr. Cobb?
So we don't need any action?
No, sir.
Okay, maybe we'll drop this item, I guess.
All right, we have a motion for Mr. Jones, do we have a second?
Wait, wait a minute, Mr. Kendrick, is that the proper move here?
Yes, sir.
Have we, did we approve yet, I thought we did not approve two weeks ago, is that not right?
Yeah, this is amending the original amount.
Okay, so we approved, right, but there was, this was where there was the discrepancy, the 84 and the 99?
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
We're set, okay.
Yes.
Making sure.
All right, motion for Mr. Jones, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wright? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Why, if we sent this back to committee, and then now we send it back out again, do we not have to vote in the positive?
No, we're dropping it.
No, we're just dropping it because we don't... Then why did we do this in the first place?
Well, that was debatable.
That was to give us time to clarify.
Yes.
Correct.
We had some murkiness, Mr. Gualtney.
Yeah, I remember the difference, because I couldn't find a contract in state of the 88 versus the most recent one.
We no longer have murkiness.
Make sure we're good together.
Thank you, one more time, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that is unanimous, we will move on. 3605-19, request for consideration to authorize the mayor to sign an annual maintenance service agreement with Motorola for radio and E911, requested by Brandon Broadhead and Chief Bresnan, report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the Committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item.
All right, so we have a motion from finance, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That is Resolution 1987, and that is approved. Next item is committee referral agenda, Chair would more than welcome a motion for approval of such.
Second.
Motion for Ms. Smith, second from Mr. Higginbotham. Any comments or questions, if there are none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is approved. All right, other new business, 1306-19, public hearing set for tonight, for the purpose of determining whether any building, structure, or improvements situated at 553 Edgecrest Drive, Homewood, Alabama, 35203, is unsafe to the extent it creates a public nuisance and should be demolished, let me open a public hearing, Mr. Wyatt, go.
Yes, sir, good evening, I'll keep this fairly brief, due to repeated complaints about the rear of the structure, there's an unfinished addition that was started on this house a number of years ago, the permit, there was a permit taken out, but it was voided over a year ago due to inactivity, I've provided some pictures showing the state of the yard that's generated some of the complaints, some code violations, including missing, missing handrails and guards, et cetera, that, I want to point out that the main residence is not being considered as a part of this issue, there's a picture of the house with the notice on the front. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to.
I have a question, when were these pictures taken?
These pictures were taken Friday.
Okay, this past Friday, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, counsel, Mr. Jones?
Has a homeowner responded?
Just today, in fact, the homeowner is here.
Okay.
This will be the first I've heard.
Okay, so just a response, not a...
Yes, yes, sir, I've provided in the packet there a sort of a timeline of notifications, and I did speak with Ms. Baylon once before, after, back in 2018, she did come to my office and asked for an extension, and then that was the last I heard from her.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh.
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, if you'll tell us your name and pull the microphone down a little bit, sorry.
Angela Baylon, 553 Edgecrest Drive, Homewood, 35209, I do have pictures, we've been working for the past week, the back is cleared, we have begun putting the siding up, we have been saving and we're working towards that, the air conditioner and heating in the house went out, so the money that was going towards that, went towards that, we, I've gotten the pictures that I took before we left, that everything has been cleared up in the back, the issue with the handrails, yes, we know we are working on that, my husband is doing, you know, weekends and nights and trying to work around the rain, and then, like I said, we have managed to put the money back together, we have started putting the siding on.
Well, let me ask you this, ma'am, if we were to, I haven't discussed Mr. Pugh's recommendation, but if we were to extend you two more weeks to try to continue to work on this, could you alleviate all of these needs?
I am not exactly sure of what, other than the siding and the things that are in the yard, those have all been cleared away.
Well, I understand, but the safety rails are...
Right, the rails could be definitely done and...
I mean, the rails would have to have Mr. Pugh's approval.
Okay.
I'm sorry, yes?
I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Pugh, you had said that there was a permit pulled, it's no longer active, would that require that they pull an active permit to complete the work?
this public hearing, ma'am, we have to know that at some point, all of these items are going to be complete.
Yes, my husband was working all weekend.
I understand.
And he's going to be off this week continuing to work on that.
But I will point out to you, as Mr. Wolverton just said, he's working without a permit right now, and that's problematic for us in the city, correct?
Yes, sir. What I would need you to do is come back in and reapply for a permit, because the old building permit that you had from a couple of years ago, it got voided due to inactivity. So, if you'll just come back and apply for another permit, we'll work that out between the two of us.
Oh, okay.
That really would need to be a tomorrow visit, if possible, up here. All right. Any questions or comments? I'm one person, I'm busy.
Can I have you, for the record, Mr. Pugh, just describe what, besides the handrails, I understood that for sure, what else needs to be completed to kind of satisfy the needs currently?
I can't speak to the condition of the roof of the house. I don't know if it has any leaks or anything. The interior of the addition is entirely unfinished, so, I can't, it's not approved for occupancy. That's about as...
Well, that's another issue.
A whole nother issue.
Go ahead, Mr. McCloskey.
Is this, is this a, will this be an addition interior, or is this like a screened-in porch based off of what I'm looking at in the pictures? It's a screened-in porch?
This is a screened-in porch.
Okay.
Mr. Jones, you had a comment?
No, yes, sir, I do. I mean, can we just be clear about what needs to happen within the next two weeks if we carry this over? Continue it, I mean, does this sum it up right here?
We want to have a degree of flexibility, but...
This sums it up, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir, that sums up the code violations. Now, I'll be happy to go out there and walk the project with her and point out specifics.
Okay.
You know, practical specifics rather than code violations.
Okay. That'd be great, thank you.
Well, and can it be done in two weeks, Wyatt?
Well, I won't say it could be finished in two weeks, but they could clear up the violation situation.
We could have, we could have some significant progress.
Okay.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, what we will do is continue this item. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this? Have you signed in, sir? Okay. Y'all have a seat, the two of y'all, and let this gentleman come forth. And your name is?
Mike Wyndham.
Mr. Wyndham.
And I live at 545 Edgecrest Drive.
Sure.
And I've lived there for about twenty-five years. The truth of this, if we can bring the pictures back up, the screened-in porch or whatever that's been there for, now, they wanted to get this done in two weeks, it's been there for about nine years. This isn't something they just built. And these pictures, I have also sent, how long ago it was? It was before our city council guys from Ward Two are in here now. I sent them to the old city council. This has gone on forever, and they play a game with abandoned cars out front. We've had the chief and everybody up there about that. This, they, the city, they put everything they've cleaned up now for the city to come pick up. It's sitting out there where they've cleaned up their part of their yard today. The screened-in porch or whatever it's going to be just got sides on it in the last two or three years, because it was granted an extension upon extension upon extension, and it never has got through. It's so much bigger than the house. It's taller, it's bigger, it's wider than the house. It doesn't fit any part of this neighborhood. And like I said, the pictures, all of this stuff that's out here by this air conditioner, where it's pallets, old broken mirrors and everything are still there. That hasn't even been cleaned up, that they're talking about getting ready for. It has gone on forever. They, we, with Peanut, we've gone back and forth with these cars. He'll move the car about five feet to prove that he moved it, so he gets another couple of weeks with this. This has gone on for years and years, and I'm just, I'm asking that this come to an end, because we can, we can give him the extensions that he needs, but like I said, we're nine, ten years into this, and it's two more weeks, one more day, I don't, whatever. I just, I just, the neighborhood, we've talked, we meet a good bit about this, and several of them, we just got noticed that this was going to be here today, or we would have had the whole neighborhood up here today, because this is, with J.J. and the mayor's help, we figure like we're going to eventually get this to come to an end.
All right, Mr. Wyndham, we understand. Before you leave, any questions, Mr. Wyndham, Mr. Wright?
Yeah, Mr. Wyndham, thank you for being here, and thank you for sharing those comments. If, if, and we're here, hearing this, and if everything is miraculously cleared up in two weeks, I don't think this council's going to be messing around with it in two weeks, but if everything, ma'am, two weeks, and miracles occur, then I assume you would be pleased with that.
It's just...
And I understand if it doesn't, then, two weeks, and we've all been put on notice, everybody's been put on notice, and we can address it.
Right. And I understand there's certain procedures and all that, and if they do whatever is asked of them about that, but this isn't something that just happened in the last, you know, since the month. We're talking nine or ten years.
No, and that's...
And it's been, and it just got sides on it.
Yeah, and that's important, and that's the point. If, if, if they want to be serious for two weeks, we're not even talking thirty days, we're talking two weeks, if you want to be serious and get this addressed, we'll get it addressed, and the council can respond in two weeks.
I've got, I know that my Ward Two individuals want to have some comments here, but Mr. Pugh?
Yes, sir.
Is it typical for an addendum to a home or appendage to a home, however you want to word it, to be taller than the existing structure?
No, sir, it's not. It's not. That is an unusual situation there.
That's bothersome.
So, that was, yeah, touching on kind of what I was going to ask about, which is whether things were built to code specifications, or, you know, I don't know about offsets or anything, you know, of that nature, but just trying to figure out, you know, legally is what's there allowed currently, too.
It would need careful inspection. It looks suspicious, the way the two roofs come together. It looks like it creates a water runoff crisis. I'd have to see how that's, how that works. I mean, I don't know where the water goes when it hits that valley between the two houses, so, that's a real issue.
It's just as obvious on that, that it's taller.
Well, yes, Mr. Wyndham, I mean, and that was why, that was my question, sir. Here's what I would charge you to do.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pugh, please, mayor. Inspect closely and see if the core structure or the basic structure violates any, any potential building code, and if that's the case, then we go, you know, it's a real easy decision to make in two weeks, frankly.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I guess I would add to that. My understanding from what you said is you were not even able to view the interior of the, I mean, inspect the interior, really?
That's correct.
To assess safety and whether there's any wood rot or anything like that that might be a concern as well, so, yeah, I agree.
We're going to go back to leaving this public hearing open, but we're going to have lots of answers, and good faith, indications or lack thereof in a two-week period of time, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Wyndham, we do appreciate it.
Mr. President, I do have a question.
Yes, go.
Mr. Wyatt, or actually, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Pugh or Mr. Cook, in regards to this property, has this been brought before in regards to public nuisance that you can recall?
I have addressed it two years ago. I addressed it recently. The other part, I'm coding, of course, an officer has been handling it.
Okay.
Two years ago, I had it cleaned up, and it never did come before, y'all.
Okay, okay. That was, that was my question, whether it had come here for the, okay.
But, but I am correct, I don't have to be right, but I'm correct, am I not, that if the core structure or the addendum structure violates something, then this whole issue's moot?
If I may just point out one thing, the condemnation proceeding focuses on unsafe conditions specifically. Whether there are building code violations, I will, I can address those separately, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a part of my speaking to its lack of safety.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So, this item's carried over, fourteen oh six nineteen, request to place a lien for the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars thirty-four cents on the property located at 307 West Glenwood Drive, Homewood, 35209. This property has been declared a public nuisance on October eighth, 2018, council meeting, Resolution 18149. A motion and a second, please, someone.
Uh-huh.
Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mr. Wyatt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes ten zero. Ms. Salter, and that is Resolution 1988. Thank you. We'll move on. Fifteen oh six nineteen, request to place a lien in the amount of one thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-four cents on the property located at 151 Wildwood Parkway, Homewood, 35209. This property was declared a public nuisance at the January fourteenth, 2019, council meeting, Resolution 1902. Again, the chair would welcome a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion, but where is this one?
This one is next to the, oh, gosh, the taco business, Taco...
Oh, Taco Casa.
Yeah, the vacant lot to the left of it.
Got it.
So, we have a motion from Ms. Smith. Do we have a second? Second from Mr. McCloskey. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, and that is approved. Mr. Cook, we're just moving right along. Okay, sixteen oh six nineteen, request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 1117 Hardwick Lane, Homewood, 35209. A public nuisance due to the violation of ordinance since 1910, and seventeen fifty excessive growth requested by Scott Cook, our sanitation ordinance inspector, and we're going to set this public hearing for July eighth, 2019, at 6:00 P.M. Okay, Mr. Cook?
Fine, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here for that. Next is seventeen oh six nineteen, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of May twenty-first, 2019, through June tenth, 2019, requested by our city treasurer, finance committee, Mr. Jones.
I want to thank Mr. Thames for, there was a lot of vouchers this time, so, I appreciate his diligence, so.
Nope, they were a lot. Mr. Burgett answered one question. Other than that, if things get to go, I would recommend approval and payment.
Great. We have a motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mr. Higginbotham. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is nineteen ninety, and that is approved, ten zero. Eighteen oh six nineteen, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with one roof, requested by Mike Higginbotham. Mr. Higginbotham, can you give us a little more about this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This item was in the budget at the beginning of the year. It was one of our non-departmental allocations, like the Exceptional Foundation and those kind of organizations. They work with a homeless community, helping them to access and be steered into different kinds of services and things like that, and we put it in the budget, and I think the contract was actually worked out several weeks ago, but it just came to my attention that the mayor had not been approved to sign the contract, so, I wanted to get it on the agenda and just go ahead and get this moving forward so they can get that money.
What was the amount?
I think it was ten thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Burgett. We appreciate that. All right, are you making a motion, Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes, sir, I make a motion to approve.
Motion for Mr. Higginbotham, second from Mr. McCloskey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is, again, ten zero, nineteen ninety-one. Finally, twenty oh six nineteen, request for consideration of a moratorium on new construction permits in the West Homewood District for one hundred and twenty days. Mr. Higginbotham and Mr. Wolverton, I'm going to allow Mr. Higginbotham to voice. He and I had some discussions prior to the council meeting. I'm going to let him voice some of this.
Yes, sir. The reason for this request, as the council is aware, we had an item come up several weeks ago, and there was a almost a universal disappointment by members of the community about how the project developed and the kind of project that went into the West Homewood District over there. And so, on planning and development, we're currently looking at the ordinance and trying to figure out ways to redraw the district that make better sense, and will limit some of the things that neighbors seem to find objectionable. As part of that, Andrew and I had talked about it, and we felt like it made good sense to have some sort of moratorium in place, to make sure that no other development of that kind would be able to proceed until we have an opportunity to address this as a council and the planning commission to address it as well, just as a, I guess, sort of take a breath, look at the West Homewood District and make sure that it's achieving the goals that we want it to achieve, and that what we have in the district is acceptable to the residents of the surrounding neighborhood. That was the intention of the moratorium. It's a hundred and twenty days, which is not forever. It's actually a relatively short period of time, and we're only talking about the West Homewood District, which is a very limited number of projects, properties.
Well, all of that's very true. I would point out to all of y'all that there's no question, as it's been pointed out to me, that planning is not planning and development, but the planning...
Commission.
Yes, thank you. Commission is going to expect some specific recommendations here in order to move within that time period, and, you know, we hope that that'll be the case, but we're going to have to, we're going to have to pull some things together to make recommendations as a council in order to make that happen. Can you understand that, Mr.?
Yes, sir. I intend to bring some of my own recommendations next Monday night for the PND meeting, and I already have some thoughts, and I welcome suggestions from other parties as well, obviously. I have no monopoly on wisdom, and, but I have some specific thoughts that I think would have addressed the previous situation in any event, but we also need to look more proactively. This isn't just about one development.
It's not.
It's about what we want to do to make that district. Are there changes that we can make that will make the district more likely to produce the vision that was stated at the time the West Homewood District was developed, because I don't think this was exactly what people had in mind for the development. But I was not on the council at the time, but that is my interpretation from the meetings I attended, that this was a little outside of that vision.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
When did we make the modifications where we had reverse parking and all that? I thought that was during this council, so...
The ordinance drafted by the BRPC was simply always had that in it. You wish, or the BZAs, it's a variances to do away with that. G. Marcos was the last thing I remember.
Okay, well...
The ordinance has been like it is.
We made a few changes about a year and a half ago, reduced the glazing percentage, changed the reverse angle parking, things like that.
I guess my question is, how did, I know we can't go back, but how was that missed? Were we just looking at large items that we wanted to correct? I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, we need to take more attention to detail, I guess, but I thought when we made those changes, that they, that they would be in the best interest, like you're talking about.
I agreed with the changes at the time, as the council did, obviously, since we adopted them. The only way I know to answer that, Mr. Jones, is to say that those were problems that we saw at the time, and we were able to address those problems at the time. I think, and Mr. Thames may be in a better position to address this, but I believe most of the changes we made were in direct result of variances that had been requested, because they're clearly from the commentary that came from applicants during the variance period, that some of the requirements just didn't seem to be, glazing was mentioned for one, but just didn't seem to be realistic, that it was, we were set the bar so high people couldn't achieve it. The reverse angle parking came up, because I'm not sure why that was ever in the district again, that, but I think there, I think, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Okay.
That we, we need to take a hard look at it. I have been asked by the chair of the PND to have things Monday night, so I'm going I have been asked by the chair of the PND to have things Monday night, so I'm going to have some things Monday night. I cannot tell you it will be an exhaustive list, and that's why I'm saying I am open to any idea that's a good idea, and I have no pride of ownership in any list that's presented or comes out of here. I just want it to achieve the goals, and I look forward to benefiting from the wisdom of everyone who takes a look at the West Homewood District and has some thoughts. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Higginbotham, are you making a motion?
Yes, sir. I move that we establish a moratorium on new development in the West Homewood District for a hundred.
New construction.
New construction in the West Homewood District for 120-day period.
All right, do we have a second?
We need to be a little more specific, and I'd ask Mr. Kendrick, should we possibly be wording around new construction permitting, a certain percentage of a?
Development plans?
I don't know, but just new construction seems sort of vague.
What the resolution says, based on my instructions from Mr. Limbaugh, it's, and I'll read that to you, maybe.
Please do.
Place a moratorium on the issuance of building permits within the West Homewood zoning district for any new developments occurring, and Mr. Limbaugh instructed from July 1 through November 1.
Did.
Unless otherwise provided by the council. During this moratorium, no building permits or zoning applications. To rezone property located in the West Homewood District will be considered by the council if the moratorium is being instituted in order to provide opportunity for the public and administrative input concerning the terms and conditions of the West Homewood zoning district and the possible modifications or enhancements to the current zoning ordinance of the West Homewood zoning district ordinance.
All right, Mr. Thames still has the floor.
Well, I'm just concerned about, I think what Mr. Higginbotham's intention is, is to delay new, complete new development, similar to what we dealt with last week. We don't want, I don't think we want to exclude someone wanting to do some remodeling or maybe a small addition onto their existing facility, which is why I think we need to word it properly to allow for that. Maybe we follow our BEZ's description of what they consider new construction versus remodeling or addition. I'm not sure what that is. I think we lost Mr. Pew and Mr. Cobb. You know, I think, just from memory, it's something if more than 50% of the structure's being affected, it's considered a new build. You have to code up, et cetera, et cetera. So, if it's something less than that, maybe we permit that.
I think that would fit, Mr. Higginbotham, would that fit with you?
I am, as long as Mr. Wolverton's comfortable with that, I'm not uncomfortable with that. My major goal is to prevent, prevent in the interim, people coming in and doing entirely new developments on property, knowing full well that we're in the process of trying to change the West Homewood District, and that just gives me pause.
All right.
Just a point of clarification, I believe what Mr. Kendrick read said it wouldn't come before the council, but it doesn't already come before council, so it would be, would it be planning commission we would need to write in there, or?
Well, essentially, the moratorium would prevent the issuance of any permits. You can't have any construction without permits.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to clarify.
I'm just trying to address whatever it is you need to address.
Sure, and I think.
The permit was based on emails from you Friday.
As well as conversation with me, yes, 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 yes.
So, you can make any changes you desire.
I think one of those other changes, and I think, I think we were all in agreement, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we talked about moving it up from July 1st, but having, having kind of this new construction be, allowing for people that currently already have, as Mr. Thames had alluded to.
I have no issue with moving it up from July 1st if we're going to allow people that are wanting to do.
Correct.
Renovations or remodeling of their existing facilities. I don't see any reason to disallow that.
I would only point out to all of y'all, all three of y'all, I'm not hearing from y'all, so I'm looking at this side, I would point out to all three of y'all that by moving it up, you're also limiting the dates, I mean, instead of going through the end of October, we're going to go through mid-October, and therefore, several council members have made it very clear to me that they will not approve 121st day, and what you won't hear is enough time to let planning and everyone look at this, not only PND as a committee, but planning to look at this as well. Am I correct, Mr. Thames? Tell me if I'm wrong.
Well, that's a good point. I want to look at the calendar because just, just as everyone knows, any changes have to begin at the planning commission. The planning commission will not meet again until July 2nd.
Are they meeting July 2nd, for sure?
Uh.
Probably not.
We haven't, to my knowledge, we haven't changed the calendar. I can confirm that.
Be easy and move there maybe.
But then, obviously, they won't, most likely, we will not be able to pass anything if that means, the absolute soonest anything could be passed would be August 6th, at which point it would come back to us. I don't know what our calendar looks like in August, but early September is probably the soonest the council could enact any changes.
I guess.
That's the absolute soonest.
I guess I would ask if the proffer of allowing current, you know, current business owners, if that would change anybody else's mind about, I don't know who you're alluding to that said I would not go 121 days, but if we needed to, I'm wondering if the fact that we're kind of modifying it slightly from the original discussion, if that would change it.
If we keep it beginning on July 1st as we originally stated, that would run through the end of September, in my opinion, that is.
End of October.
Excuse me, the end of October, that is more than enough time if we're doing our jobs to enact some changes that while it may not create a whole new zone over there, it will at least stem any of these really undesirable type developments that folks are concerned about.
Are you concerned, you're not concerned at all about anything coming in before that July 1st timeline?
Oh.
That's my, that's, I think Mike and I.
I see what you're saying.
Our concern is.
Sure, I see what you're saying.
We're allowing enough time potentially for other things that we don't want to have to.
Especially if we announce the moratorium that far in advance.
Well, I mean, pick your choice here. We know we can get, if you want to do it June 15th, then propose that, but understand that that goes through mid-October and that's it. You know, don't, don't get hung up on who says yes, who says no. Just know all you've got is 120 days, and that's it.
It would still give us potentially.
It doesn't change the number of planning commission meetings or anything like that.
It still gives us the same number of meetings.
Okay, so what's your motion? Either one of you?
I mean, I, well, how are we going to phrase that, Brett, to allow for, I know we talked about adopting the BZA.
49%, you know, 150%.
Okay, so just use a percentage?
I don't know what it is off the top of my head, 40, if we can fill it.
But it sounds, it sounds usable.
I just think we should allow people that are simply wanting to do remodeling, replacing their windows or whatever.
I don't disagree. I don't think we disagree on that point.
However, that needs to be worded, worded that way.
Go.
Agreed.
We're going to finish this item, folks. Let's go.
Why don't we just use, I mean, is there a problem with using Brett's suggestion of whatever, however BEZ defines it, they define it? Right, but I mean, we just fill in the definition for BEZ.
That's fine.
Okay. I would be, I would make a motion to that effect, that we fill in the definition using BEZ as to the distinction between remodeling versus new construction, and we allow for the remodeling and not the new construction within the district. We have the moratorium for 120 days, and that the moratorium began on the.
We call it the 14th.
The 14th, which is Friday. That's my motion.
All right, is that a second, Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Did all that make sense, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir, I'm struggling with that, but I'll get that resolved.
I understand.
And I'll send you a copy.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? With that, that's an 11-0, and that passes. Mayor?
That's it.
All right. Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Wow. So, we have, we have committee meetings next Monday night, and I'm going to let PND set their time first.
Well, we all know 5 o'clock is already counted for, right?
I just said that you could set your time first.
Really? Wow.
Mr. Thames, can I mention?
I feel like I've won the lottery here.
Mr., can I mention real quick?
He doesn't have to choose that. He can, he can.
Well, I'm going to pick 5.
Well, I would like to be, the runs and road bid opening is at 5 o'clock, and I'm on PND. Is that possible for me to just come down a few minutes late to that?
Well, in that case, in that case, we're back to Mr. Jones.
Sorry.
Sorry, I tried. I just want you to notice, I tried.
Sorry.
Okay, I want that on public record here. Mr. Jones, how much time do you need?
PND will be at 5:30.
Sorry.
Let's go 30 minutes, and Andy and I will be hosting a meeting at the Lee Center next, Thursday, a week from Thursday, the 20th, at 6 o'clock. We will be, I want to say media, hosting a meeting between Jared Lewis, the developer that owns ABX, and the community, just to get some community input on the appearance of his potential rezone request to mix use for two parcels, maybe three parcels, over on either side of his ABX building, so if anybody's interested. Also, tonight, we approve the final architectural and construction drawing draw for the library, which means I would assume it's getting pretty close to bed, which is exciting. So, everybody's having a good week.
Good. Thank you.
What time did you set, PND?
5:30.
5:30, okay.
5:36. Mr. Higginbotham?
I just want to thank my colleagues for supporting the moratorium, and that's really all I have tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wolverton?
We had a great street fest a couple weekends ago. We changed the setup a little bit if anybody wasn't, wasn't able to come. Had the live band out in the grass area and tons of inflatables and great food and music and everything else, so want to thank all the sponsors and everybody else that helped contribute to making that happen, people organizing it. I think that's, yeah, like I said, or like Mike said, thank you guys for supporting our efforts to try and make sure that we can ensure the design, I think, that most of the neighborhood would like to see with the West Homewood District and helping us to identify some of those potential flaws in how it was passed the first time around, so.
Thank you. Mr. McCluskey, public safety.
Yes, Mr. Wyatt, will you be here next week?
I will.
Excellent, okay. So, I will not be, so if you don't mind chairing public safety for me. So, we'll start at 6:00, and we have three items that have just come on through the referral agenda, so I will try and have, I will contact Randy to see if he can get some of this pre-work done before the meeting, so we'll just do 15 minutes, and then whatever he may or may not be able to do between then, you know, we'll see. But, so we'll do public safety from 6:00 to 6:15, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Finance at 5:00, nothing further.
Just to make sure everybody's clear.
I want the council to acknowledge that I tried to make a change here.
I thought you could have dropped the mic.
Ms. Smith?
I will set special issues for 6:15, and I have five issues, I only have five, but one of them is kind of one that might spur some discussion, so I'm going to just go ahead and take 30 minutes, if that's okay.
6:15 or 6:45?
Yes, please.
Anything else?
No, that's it for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Wyatt?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews?
Well, I have a special guest tonight. My mom is in the audience, Terri Lowry.
We like your daughter a great deal. We do.
I know I've told you all this before, but my mom is the director of the water department of the city of Dallas. She is in control of the Trinity River. She is in control of 1,500 people in her department, and yesterday, there was a micro storm that came through Dallas. I don't know if you saw that. So, she's been dealing with that all day while she's been taking care of our kids, so.
He's a little help here.
Yeah. Yes. She's a native of Ensley, so she's quite familiar with how things go in Birmingham, so. So, anyway, glad to have her with me tonight. I wanted to extend my prayers for the runner that was hit right by the end of my street. I have hundreds and hundreds of friends that run that route all the time, and I myself have done it a million times, and so just thoughts and prayers to him and his family. Tomorrow, again, please join us. We'll be at Birmingham City Hall at 7:30 to run the Mag, to run, to ride. Ride. I'll be running beside of us, yeah, over the mountain. We'll be riding the new Magic City Connector to Homewood City Hall, so that's very exciting. And also, we have a deed, so I want to thank Mr. Pew. I know he stepped out, but we do have our deed for the last parcel for Phase 2 of the Greenway, so we're all good.
It's great.
That's it.
I have to say, your daughter brags on you a lot, but I think it's all deserved us based on everything she's told us, so it's great to have you here.
Thank you.
Mr. Wyatt?
It would really be great to have you here if we could get you into the Birmingham Water Works Board. That's really exciting, my Magic City Connector, it really was, and appreciate it very. Thank you. I know that was a challenge getting all that stuff done today, but that was, it really is pretty exciting, and it really is, I wasn't going to say this, but, you know, I'm going to hold out some hope that that transit authority can really be a vehicle for regional cooperation. I mean, there was some optimism, there's been some change, and that would just be a wonderful testament of something that can work with all our region and with Homewood, helping carry the water and do that. But, pardon my commentary, but I don't really have anything further except Public Works will very conveniently meet at 6:45 for just 15 minutes at most, probably like 3:00, so. Well, actually, we may have, we may have one issue, but should be 15 minutes at most. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. I just want to go on record, I may be the only retail automobile dealer in all of Jefferson County that supports mass transit, so, anyway, that's a statement of fact. With that, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.